The City Council has just completed an executive session, and we are now out of that session and into City Council meeting. If you would please stand for the prayer and the pledge. This will be my last time of leading us in the prayer and the pledge as mayor. Let's pray. Lord God Almighty, Creator of heaven and earth, I thank you for democracy and the powerful reality that the voice and vote of every citizen matters and counts. As I prayed to you 10 years ago at the dedication of this city hall, thank you, Lord, that we live in a country where the voices of all the citizens can be heard. At this city hall, our fellow citizens will work, and we, the people, will elect city councils to serve here from among our neighbors. Tonight, I thank you for your guidance. For every council meeting, I have asked you to give me discernment. Where I've been faithful to that, I give you thanks. Where I have failed, forgive me. Father, these almost four years have been so fulfilling as a team made up of the citizens, the council, the staff, and community partners. So much has been accomplished for the good of this community. Whatever the makeup of this council after May 7, give them wisdom, discernment, and heart of love for Kerrville. In Christ's name, amen. Join me in the pledge.
My pledge is to defy the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary here in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they are to come to the microphone and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after the public comments have been concluded. At this time, do we have items of community interest?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have one. Kind of a, I don't want to say a slow week, just a, it's going to be a great weekend. And that actually brings me to my, I guess I need to turn that off. Actually brings me to my, there it is, announcement for Friday. We're going to be closed here Friday for Easter holidays. The City of Kerrville Municipal Offices and the Buttholesworth Memorial Library will both be closed this Friday. The library will actually be closed all weekend, which is unusual. They're usually open on Saturdays, but not this Saturday. Everything will return to normal on Monday. The city secretary's office will also be closed Friday, so keep that in mind. The Shrinna Park will remain open. And we just want to say we hope everybody has a great and very safe and very happy Easter. And let me say one thing, it's not an official city function, but don't forget Easter Fest Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Flat Rock Park. Barbecue, chili cook-off, and Easter egg hunt. And proceeds will benefit both the Doyle Community Center and VA Dogs, Veterans Dogs of Texas. So two great, great causes there. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. And council, anything else to add? Okay. If not, I would like to ask Allen Hill's family members to join me and those veterans here that are here to honor him. Guys, you want to come on up? City of Kerrville proclamation. Whereas Alexander Allen Hill entered the U.S. Army in 1966 with three tours in Vietnam as an artilleryman and combat medic and earned the nickname Doc. He left the military in 1979. And whereas, following his military career, he went into law enforcement until retired by a drunk driver in 1989, which he had previously arrested. He then went into nursing until the early 2000s. Allen Hill was one of the founding members of the TJ STEM Memorial Chapter of the Vietnam Veterans of America, number 863, in 2000, serving as president for many terms. He became a nationally accredited veteran service officer. In 2013, he helped establish the Hill Country Veterans Center in Kerrville. He also volunteered for the Heart of the Hills Veterans of Foreign Wars Post, number 1480, where he helped veterans navigate the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs process. And whereas Allen Hill was involved in many other veteran organizations' activities, he was a member and commander of the Hill Country Honor Guard and a member of the Hill Country Veterans Council. He facilitated the so proudly we hailed museum and displays, hosted food pantries, and organized Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies at Kerrville National Cemetery, Kerr County Courthouse, and the Hill Country Veterans Center. And whereas the City of Kerrville would like to respectfully honor the achievements of Alexander Allen Hill, who generously gave his time and talents to improve our community. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 12, 2022, as Alexander Allen Hill Day in Kerrville, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join me in commemorating his life and honoring his service, dedication, and contributions to our community and his veterans. In witness where I am, I have a here to set my hand that calls the seal of the City of Kerrville to be affixed this 12th date of April 2022. Bill Blackburn, mayor. And it is such an honor to have family here and those who have served and were friends of Allen Hill's. He was a great guy. He was easy to talk to, interesting. He was so proud of his work for veterans. And the museum there at the Veterans Center, I find just amazing. Kids love that, you know what? They love to go through there. Okay. We can't, everybody can't speak, but any, any words you have for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a note?
Yes.
To tell you the story.
Yeah, I want to hear, I want to hear. Okay. Now let's look, right over here. Right. Thank you very, very much. There you go. Oh, yes. Family says that they thank you for all that you've done for Allen Hill and them. Thank you. Okay. You ready to come to our visitor's citizen's forums? Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, we have four. Eric Hill.
How you doing, Eric Hill? I am from Uvalde, and I am here just to let you know I'm opening a new business here. Smoking Hills Tobacco Inc., we are a tobacco shop, health supplement, and all types of other good stuff there. Just wanted to introduce myself. That was about it.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Welcome to Kerrville.
George Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So there was a letter to the editor in the paper today, and it had a couple of things in there that probably need to be corrected. So it, talking about taxes, and it said, is actually the appraisals that are going up, and that will increase property tax revenue. In fact, that's kind of backwards. In your budgets, you guys see it. But the balanced budget is created by first itemizing your proposed revenues and proposed expenses and for the services you're wishing to provide. The property tax revenue is essentially the gap financing between the two. And so the gap is filled by whatever that amount of revenue is, which you guys determine by adopting a budget, and the tax rate is backed into from that. So in fact, you guys control the only thing that controls tax increases, which is the revenue needed to balance that budget. And in fact, this year, I don't know, because I wasn't there when it was adopted, the actual rate, but we utilized the maximum tax revenue, the rate that you could use, allowed without needing voter approval, which kind of makes me feel like, and I'm not sure this happened, but we've kind of disregarded what total gap needed to be filled and we fully fund, to fully fund the services, and we simply went with the rate that stays under that cap. If we did that, we'd be deferring expenses that we knew were on there, that we needed to pay in a later year, which kind of gets us to the next topic, which is deferred expenses. Everybody, I don't know how many people watched Popeye when they were a kid. Maybe you still watch it now. But Popeye's friend, Wimpy, he said, "I'd gladly pay you Tuesday for a hamburger today." Well, we seem to be doing some of that in our budgeting. We kind of say, "I'd gladly pay you over the next 20 years for street maintenance today." And we're proposing to say, "I'd gladly pay you over the next 30 years for a public, for a police station today." Another thing that was in that same letter to the editor said, "Every dollar received in property taxes is divided in this way. KISD gets 51%. City of Kerrville gets 25%. Kerr County gets 21%." While this may be true this year, that's not how the taxes are paid. So there's really no relationship between the City of Kerrville and KISD. The services provider are mutually exclusive. To combine those tax bills in this way is misleading at best. And it's actually what's going on when we're talking about the public safety bond election. They're presenting it as if it's a portion of the total tax bill, which it's not. Kerr County has their own budget, mutually exclusive services. KISD, same deal. City of Kerrville, the only budget you control, the only budget the voters are voting on, has to do with the City of Kerrville. So, so that. So the public safety bond election. It would be nice if the facts, all the facts, were being put out. Let the voters vote on that. Don't be afraid to tell us what the truth is. And the truth is that 25% of every City of Kerrville tax dollar, give or take, of the next year, if the bond passes, will go toward this one project that actually is going to impact the budget by most likely, you're going to have to cut something. It'd be nice to know what it is we'd be cutting. Or you're going to have to increase the taxes by a decent amount to cover that plus whatever is being covered. And so the, because, I mean, if you raise the bond, well, I'm done. That's good enough. Just, I stress to you to just tell the people the truth so that we can vote on the truthful facts. Thank you.
Okay. Speaking of that, Mr. Burdi, I have a question for you. Several council meetings ago, you sent the message that you had a message from the Secretary of State saying that we should change our, the date of our election from May until November. As it turned out, that was not true.
I didn't actually say that. And if you go back and watch the video, I totally disagree with what she put in the paper. I did not actually tell you that I had something from the Secretary of State saying that your elections needed to be moved. Go back and read my email and the statements I made, and you'll find out what I said.
Okay.
Which was basically, you asked the question, so I'm going to answer it. I basically said, "Secretary of State told me that the terms begin in, on the date of election, which was November. The Secretary of State also told me that the governor's proclamation had no more force of law except in 2020. Therefore, our charter holds," that's what they were telling me, "our charter holds after that," which is what I was talking about. So you can go review those facts yourself.
Okay, I will.
Bruce Drakey.
Okay. Bruce.
Easy, peasy. Bruce Drakey, 615 Earl Garrett. And I love this setup because the fact of the matter is Kerrville is a great place. And it's a great place because 30 years ago, Joe? 30 years ago, we started with ASR wells. Aquifer, storage, and recovery wells. We have three of them today. We recently, most recently, we drilled a very deep well. Stuart can correct me, but I want to say the Ellenberg Aquifer. It's very deep. So we have three aquifers that we actually draw water from in addition to our Aquifer Storage Recovery and the Guadalupe River. And you know what that means? That means today, in an extreme drought in Kerrville, while San Antonio is moving to stage-two drought, we're still in general year-round conservation because our citizens conserve water. They're conscious of how much water they use, and they use it really well. Our staff has for years been led by a forward-thinking government to think about conservation and water, something we can only live a couple of days without. We live in the greatest place in Texas, and that's why we live here. That's why guys like me moved here from Utah 15 years ago, because we love it. And it's a wonderful place to live. And it's a wonderful place to live because we have citizens and staff, and not only this council, but the councils before them that work together for the betterment of Kerrville. And while there are some who like to complain, who like to mince words, most people love it here, and they actually want to work to make it a better place. And that is why it's such a great place to live, and it's such a blessing. And so thank you, council, for continuing with water conservation and hiring a staff that manages that stuff on a daily basis. Does such a great job. We drill deep wells. We look forward into the future about how we can do things that are on the cutting edge. In fact, Kerrville, and Joe can correct me, but Kerrville was the first city in the state of Texas to drill an ASR well. It was the second city in the nation to do so. That is correct. We are forward-thinking. We have always been forward-thinking. This is a great place. We love sustainable, slow, conscious growth. And that's why we're alive and such a wonderful place to live. And I understand everybody has an opinion, and I'm glad that folks get to address it because we live also in the greatest country in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alicia Napper. I reside at 1305 A Bear Creek Road in Kerrville. City Ordinance, Section 90-32. Obstruction of public ways unlawful. Subsection C. Placing obstructions in streets, alleys, sidewalks prohibited. Texas Penal Code, Section 22.04, subsection A. Injury to a child, elderly individual, or disabled individual with additional subsection 3, bodily injury. We are here on behalf of my mother and the small child that were involved in an incident on April 2, 2022, on the Bear Creek Low Water Crossing Bridge. My mother sustained multiple physical injuries during this incident that has required continued medical evaluation and treatment. She continues to have physical pain as well as emotional distress as a direct result of this incident. Every year, when the weather turns warmer and people begin to flock to the river, we have to call the police department multiple times to come clear this crossing of obstructions such as adults, ice chests, coolers, lawn chairs, barbecue pits, and children without appropriate parental supervision from littering the bridge and impeding the safe passage of our vehicles. The obstructions have and continue to make it unsafe to cross this bridge in a vehicle. They also significantly increase risk of someone getting hurt, seriously injured, or even killed. There are zero signs to warn traffic of potential pedestrians. Not a single, no loitering on bridge sign. Not a single, no parking sign. Only a caution sign for a one-lane bridge. There is rebar sticking out from the side edge of the bridge, where the reflectors are missing, that could potentially cause serious harm or death if pedestrians were to follow them. We have recently reported this to the city streets department. Upon speaking with the police department in regards to the city ordinance, we were informed that it is the officer's discretion to issue citations for violations, and if they did this, for violations. And if all they did was issue citations for city ordinance violations, they would be unable to do anything else. Also, upon inquiring why this crossing is not patrolled more often, we were told it's kind of out of our way. My mother, nor the child involved in the incident that occurred, should have never, ever been placed in this situation. They should, we are here to request immediate attention to this violation of city ordinance as well as immediate action to be taken to rectify it. We would like to be kept informed of the progress on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Napper. And I think that is a referral to the city manager, and go from there in regard to staff.
Jeff has had contact with the family and has also had contact with the county who co-owns that bridge. It is an actually criminal incident and investigation, so we can't comment any further in that regard.
Okay. All right. Okay.
May I say one more thing?
Yes.
That bridge is in fact in the city, it is not county-owned.
Right away, it's both owned by the county and city in part.
Okay. Okay. All right. And somebody will get back in touch with Ms. Napper.
Yes, we'll continue to work on the issue.
Okay. All right. That's all of it.
There are no more citizen speakers.
Okay. All right. Let's move to the consent agenda, please. These are items that are considered together, voted on in unison, unless a council member or a citizen pulls one of these. Counsel, what is your desire on these, on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll request to remove item 4D for separate consideration.
Or B?
Or D.
Or D?
B is a doc?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion regarding 4A, 4B, 4C, 4E, and 4F?
Yes, I'll move to approve items 4A, B, C, E, and F.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a second? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. I know we have some staff and also our airport manager here. I was just asking for some information, and I, I don't know. You can provide this, but is this the same grant that the airport board discussed at its last meeting in March?
There, yes. There was, there was a couple that were discussed at that meeting, but this one was actually discussed, yes.
Can you explain what the grant's going to be so that the public's aware of it?
It'll be capital improvements. It hasn't been determined exactly because we haven't, you know, haven't actually gone out and applied for the grant yet. So as part of our airport agreement, we have to come to you to get approval for them to even go out and request these funds. So once they go through that process, then they'll have to lay that out within the, within their ARPA things, just like we do.
Sure. Were there not possible or proposed projects that they were thinking about doing? I mean, I thought I recalled some from the meeting.
59,000, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, for capital improvements, I mean, you know, that doesn't go very far. If you've been at the airport board meetings, you know they have a lot of capital need. So it will be addressed with one of those projects.
Okay. And then that's all. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion on 4D?
I'll move to authorize the Joint Airport Board to apply for the text dot grant.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion, a second?
And I guess just to make sure, and authorize the airport manager to act as the authorized official in pursuit of said funding.
Okay. All right. Okay. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay. And thank you for airport personnel that are here. Okay, now, Ms. McLean, if you'll read in 5A.
Appointment to the Kerrville-Kerr County Joint Airport Board.
All right. Counsel, discussion?
Just want to say this, we've got a really good guy that I think, Steve, are you going to introduce him?
Yes, thank you. Steven Schmierbeck, good afternoon. I'd like to introduce the newest appointer to our Kerrville Airport Board, Bob Hamm. He's here. He's served in the Air Force. I don't know if you have his resume. It's pretty long. I don't know if you guys want me to read it, but it's very, very good. He's no stranger. He's been already acting like a board member. He's already helped us do some updates to some leases. And he's here, if I want to ask him any questions. It's annoying.
You're already getting work out of him?
It was free work.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right.
I'll just say that I spoke, I got the opportunity to speak with Mr. Hamm yesterday. I appreciate his time there and his responses to the questions and get to know him a little bit better. I'm in full support of appointing him to the board. And thank you for being here, sir.
Do we have a, do we have a motion on this matter?
I will move that we appoint Robert Hamm to the airport board. Let's see. I need to say, is that all I need to say? Yes. Okay, I'm good.
All right. And let me back up just a minute. I did not give the public an opportunity to speak. So do we have any speakers signed up?
We do not, sir.
Okay. All right. All right. We have a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Welcome and congratulations. All right. 6A, Ms. McLean.
Ordinance number 22-19. An ordinance deleting Article 2, Joint Airport Board of Chapter 22 Aviation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, as it is unnecessary to the continued existence and operation of such board containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause and providing other matters relating to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers, sir.
All right.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is merely a house cleaning exercise, if you will. Been needing to do this for a period of time. This article predates the existing code. We codified about probably 12, 15 years ago, and it just kind of matriculated over. Now, of course, we've got this interlocal agreement that is working so well, and we're probably in the third iteration of that. And so this, this code, this chapter, this article is not necessary. We ought to just, my recommendation is to get it off the books because at a minimum, it can be confusing at times as to what we're following. And certainly, we've got this great agreement between the city and the county that makes the airport function so well. And so that's what I'm here to ask you to do, is just adopt this ordinance, which will get rid of, or delete Article 2 of Chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances.
All right. Okay. Counsel, any questions on this one?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve ordinance number 2022-19 on first reading.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Mr. Garcia?
No, I was just going to make a motion. We're good.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. Thank you. We now come to public hearings and resolutions. 7A.
Resolution number 16-2022. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property addressed as 713 Harper Road North, RR 783, and out of the Fosgate Survey, Number 120, Abstract Number 138. Said property is located within the Single Family Residential Zoning District R1 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up. However, this is a public hearing.
All right. Ms. Paxton?
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 713 Harper Road. Sits at the corner of Holdsworth Drive and Harper Road. There's the existing site plan. It is zoned R1, as with the adjacent property, adjacent residences, are adjacent and across Harper Road, and backs up to the church along Holdsworth Drive. And they do have room for the three off-street parking spaces as required by the code, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on May 3. Would you please answer any questions before or after the public hearing?
All right. Any questions, council?
I noticed for this one, we don't have a map to show any other nearby short-term rentals.
I don't have this one. Off the top of my head, I don't think there are any nearby, or at least not within.
Not really a neighborhood.
Not within this neighborhood. So the closest one would be well outside of this, this view here.
All right, it is public hearing, and someone who can speak up? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion on item 7A.
I will move that we adopt resolution number sixteen dash twenty-two. I'll second.
Motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, it passes unanimously. 7B, Ms. McElhanan?
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a dwelling single-family detached with accessory dwelling unit on the property consisting of Lot Nine R, the Heights of Kerrville addition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Texas, known as one sixty-seven Paramount View. Said property is located within a residential estate zoning district RE and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. There are no citizen speakers, but it is a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Ms. Paxton?
It's a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit. The residential estates district, of course, is focused on single-family dwellings. They are allowed a guest house with, by right, or they're requesting an accessory dwelling unit as a guest house with a full kitchen facilities. And this is a replat of two lots, so it comprises about fourteen acres. There's the site plan, and there zoomed in a little closer, you can see the house up front and the guest house or the accessory dwelling unit in the rear. Request is consistent with zoning policy and comprehensive plan as it is conditional use permit and, excuse me, Planning Commission recommended with unanimous vote on March third. Would you be pleased to answer any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, Drew, I noticed that you had a resident in opposition of this, and he stated that the homeowners association did not allow more than one family unit on the lot, but then you also provided, I guess this is an approval from the homeowners association in and of itself. So, can you explain why they deviated?
That was an email from, provided by the applicant, so I don't know the details behind the HOA's decision. The, there was some discussion at P&amp;Z about the deed restrictions. As you know, the city does not have any authority over those deed restrictions nor enforcement of.
Right.
The general consensus was the HOA does allow for a guest house. There, however, is not a definition of a guest house.
Right, okay.
The zoning code defines a guest house different from an accessory dwelling unit in the absence of a kitchen for a guest house. So, this is consistent with the zoning code and zoning policies. The HOA, if there are any issues, ought to take that up as a separate civil matter.
Okay.
All right.
So, basically, the bottom line is we have no jurisdiction over anything that the Heights and that HOA are going to do. We're just here to approve the CUP for what's presented on its merits.
That is correct.
All right. We have a motion on this matter.
I will move that we approve resolution number seventeen dash twenty-two. Second.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it is unanimous. Right, 8A, Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number twenty-two dash sixteen, an ordinance amending Chapter Sixty, Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, Chapter Sixty, more commonly known as the city's zoning code, by changing the zoning for property known as six oh one Roy Street, which is out of the Cage Survey, Number One Sixteen, Abstract Number One Zero Six, and within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single-family residential zoning district R one to a light commercial zoning district C two and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is public hearing.
And she stated this is a zone change request from R one, single-family to C two, light commercial. Switch to the zoning map here. You see, this property is the only R one property in the area surrounded by commercial and multifamily. When we did the rezoning of the city with the new zoning code in twenty nineteen, this property was identified as a single-family property because it was at the time. In order to create fewer non-conformities, was zoned R one. They have since taken the house down, so it is a vacant lot, and they're wishing for a commercial zoning. Excuse me. It is part of the strategic catalyst area along Sidney Baker Street as that expands that commercial corridor coming from I ten down to downtown, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning policies. Would you be pleased to answer any questions?
And everything else in there is light commercial, so?
Yes.
Since letters were mailed out on two seventeen, have you gotten any responses?
We have not.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions on this matter? Anyone to speak to this?
Hi, my name's Adrian Blunt.
Just a second. I'm opening a public hearing. Stuart, would you adjust that mic for her?
I can hold it.
Yeah, you can just hold it.
I can hold it, yeah.
Yeah.
My name is Adrian Blunt. I live at forty-seven fifty Fredericksburg Road. My sister and I own the property, and we would like to sell it, and we feel that this is the best use of the property.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Whoa, 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 close the public hearing. There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash one-six on first reading. I'll second that.
All right, okay. A motion, second. All in favor, raise hands. Okay. 8B.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen, an ordinance amending Chapter Sixty, Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, Chapter Sixty, more commonly known as the city zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property generally located northeast of the intersection of Loop five thirty-four Veterans Highway and Landfill Road North, comprising of seventeen point eight zero three acres out of the Samuel L. Wallace Survey, Number One Twelve, Abstract Number Three Sixty, and within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a light commercial zoning district C two to a general commercial zoning district C three and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. This is a request, again, to rezone the property from C two to C three. This property is part of the catalyst area number eight, as defined in the Kerrville twenty fifty Future Land Use Plan, and the appropriate land uses include community commercial, which would be consistent with the zoning request. Here's the zoning map showing from about Olympic Drive down past Singing Winds. You can see the property right there in the middle, and that light pink is C two. Adjacent zoning is PI for the landfill. Across the street is mixed use and C three. On March third, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. Would you be pleased to answer any questions?
All right.
Drew, I'm curious, what, what would, how would you describe the difference between light commercial and general commercial?
So, the, some of the big key land uses that come into C three, some of your automotive uses, some of the more regional type uses, your big box stores. Obviously, the scale of this property wouldn't allow for any kind of big box use, so maybe some heavier commercial uses, but so light commercial is more what you'd see along Sidney Baker from about Holdsworth down to downtown, Junction Highway out towards, as you're kind of approaching Harper Road. C three kind of equate more to Walmart area or Lowe's, HEB. So, again, some of the bigger, bigger regional retailers.
Thank you. And no responses also from letters she sent out?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, counsel? Anyone to speak to this? Just one thing I noted, this is at the corner of Loop five thirty-four and Landfill Road. Could we make that Landfill Parkway or something more aesthetically pleasing?
Check with Public Works and see what we can do.
Take that under consideration. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Public hearing, anybody? Right, public hearings closed. All right, counsel, we ready to vote on this?
I will move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen on first reading.
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, thank you, it passes. 8C, Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen, an ordinance annexing a tract of land to the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property consisting of an approximate point four zero acre tract, part of Lot Eight Block One of the LA Shriners Valley subdivision, and more commonly known as three eighteen May Drive. Such property more specifically described in the ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits. Adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property is being within a medium density residential zoning district R two and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers, however, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Paxton?
This is a petition annexation request and requesting R two is the zoning consistent with the adjacent properties along May Drive. This is, again, a single, a single residential lot with a single-family home on it. They actually have been connected to city sewer based on the emergency need for services. They agreed to petition for annexation for those services. This is consistent with comprehensive plan and zoning policies, and staff recommends approval. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval on March third with unanimous vote. Would you be pleased to answer any questions?
If you go back to that slide, you would just add the colored one?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
If I can get the mouse here.
Tiny one.
This property is right here in this section of May Drive.
Drew, when, when something like this happens, I know there was a time when the old septic would have to be filled in and basically done away with. Is that still a requirement?
When there is a septic involved, yes, the Kerr County Environmental Department follows up on that.
Okay.
And we've had, we have had some instances where properties that had failing septic have come to counsel just for provision of services. In this case, with the property being adjacent to city limits, it made more sense just to petition annexation.
Any other questions? Public hearing, do we have anybody to speak? Public hearing closed. Counsel, do you have a motion on this matter?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash eighteen on first reading. Second.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Thank you, and we go to nine A.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter Fifty Fire Protection and Protection of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by adding a new section fifty point fifty dash five to adopt the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA eleven ninety-four, standard for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, adopting local amendments to said code, amending the city's fire codes to fire apparatus access roads, providing for penalty for violation of any provision thereof, and providing other matters related to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Now, this is second reading. Any, any questions from counsel? If not, do we have a motion on this?
I'll motion, we approve ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen on second reading. I'll second that.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, if you'd let me know with that raised hand, and it carries. Nine B, Ms. McElhanan?
Ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter Eighty-two, the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, such chapter more commonly known as the city subdivision code, by admitting Section Eighty-two dash fifty-three Q of said code to change requirements for points of access into residential subdivisions and aligning this section with changes to the fire code and providing other matters relating to the subject, and there are no citizen speakers.
Counsel, do you have questions on this one? This is the second, second reading again. Do we have a motion on nine B?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash fifteen.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Let's go to board appointments. Ms. McElhanan?
Two domains, three advisory board. And there are no citizen speakers.
All right. Counsel discussion on this one?
I would just like to say, I think, just from my, I wasn't part of the interview team, but I think these are two very good additions to the Main Street Board. Meredith is part of the Arcadia, and Mary Kay Wagner was actually one of the very first, or one of the initial participants in the Main Street Committee when it was first formed.
All right, okay. Ms. Garcia, you want to make this?
Sure, yeah, and I'll just add a couple of comments. So, the mayor and I were the interview team for this one. I was able to speak with both of them, very thankful for them and for applying in their interest to the service community. I'm happy with both of them. I will just note that because the qualification states that the member has to be a business owner or a property owner within the boundary, we then added that, the addition to the qualification that they can be nominated by a property or business owner. And so, Mr. Howard actually sent over an email nominating Meredith to the board, so that's all good. He wanted to make sure we're good there, and I spoke with him about that. So, unless there's anything else, counsel, necessary or any questions about it, I'll make a motion to appoint Meredith Jilly Crook and Mary Kay Wagner to the Main Street Advisory Board.
All right. Do we, got a motion, got a second? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands? Ms. McElhanan, on the next item, please.
Appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay. Interview team, Kim Clarkson and Brenda Hughes?
Yes.
Any words you have for us?
I spoke with Mr. McMillan, and he's wasn't qualified, he's happy to serve. I spoke with him again by text late this afternoon, and I said, you know, if you've changed your mind, let me know, and he's very, very happy to serve. So, at this time, I would make a motion that we appoint Tabor McMillan to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Right.
I'll enthusiastically second that.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands? Do, let's see. Do we need executive session tonight?
Record time.
Yeah, it's, it is against the law to finish this council meeting before seven, so we may need to just invite general speakers to get up and speak. Seven o'clock is, yeah, okay. Action items, sorry, items for future agendas.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think that we need to discuss the procedures for executive sessions in handling of materials and devices and all related matters.
Okay. All right, so basically, handling of...
Policies and procedures for executive session, yes.
Executive session, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, and it carries.
Opposed.
All right.
Opposed, okay.
Yeah, and also, same sign by opposed.
Opposed, yeah. I'll give my reasoning when we discuss it, I guess.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjourn us before seven.
Yay!
This, this, Hoppy, is there, is there a firm rule about?
You make the rules, sir, so...
I make, oh, I make the rules, all right. Six forty-nine, we're adjourned.